Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining the Selectmen for their December 1st, 2014, 7:00 P.M. meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we sit, if we could have a little moment of silence. Sad news today, our building commissioner, John Emity, passed over the weekend while he was on vacation up in Maine, so. Thank you. The Town of Millville sends their condolences to the Emity family and friends. It's quite a shock when somebody goes that's not sick at such a young age, but so thoughts and prayers out to that family. Then we'll move on to announcements. The Board hopes everyone had a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Tax rate before the holiday last week, the Selectmen held a public hearing with a board of assessors to consider the town's taxes classification. The Board voted to maintain a single tax rate. The FY15 tax rate will be seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents per thousand pending the DOR approval, which equates to an increase in the average single-family home of about one hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. This is up by six cents from seventeen dollars and eighteen cents in FY14. The town's excess levy capacity is under the one thousand, under the one thousand dollar mark.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, at about 2:30 this afternoon, we did receive confirmation that that was approved by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, great, good, thank you. The goal-setting meeting, the Board will meet next Monday, December 8th, for its second special meeting in connection with the Board's goal-setting initiative. Resident participation is encouraged and welcomed. Social media, we are attempting to utilize social media more frequently in order to get news and information out to the residents of the town. If you are interested in town news, information, and events, please like us on Facebook at TownOfMillvilleMA and/or follow us on Twitter at @MillvilleMA. 2015 Top Dog Contest beginning today and the entire month of December. You can send in or drop off at the Town Hall a photo of your dog for the town's Top Dog Contest. Write the owner's name, telephone number, as well as the dog's name on the back of the photo. The winner will receive Millville's Number One Dog License, free of charge, and as well, some dog treats. The Town Clerk's Office will announce the winner in January. And last, the town's Christmas tree lighting is tomorrow evening, Tuesday, December 2nd, at 6:30 P.M. at the Veterans Memorial Park on Main Street. Santa will arrive on a fire truck and greet all children present. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have tabled from last meeting, we have minutes from November 3rd, 2014, at 7:00 P.M. Motion approved? Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have November 10th, 2014, at 7:00 P.M. Motion approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have November 17th, 2014, at 7:00 P.M. Motion approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last is November 24th, 2014, at 6:30 P.M.
Motion approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Bob did it standing in front of the hall.
Yes.
All right, warrants?
I do have the warrants. First is the payroll deduction warrant for the last pay period, November 17th, in the amount of four thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and five cents. I have the payroll for this pay period, which is ending November 29th, in the amount of forty-two thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy cents. And you'll note that's slightly higher than usual because the stipends are in this. And the vendor warrant dated today, December 1st, in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and four cents.
Is the motion to approve is read?
Motion to approve is read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have reports of town officials. The zoning board was supposed to be present, they had to cancel, and Parks and Rec was supposed to be present, and they also had to cancel. But we do have the centennial. We were gonna do some rewording of the bylaw of who can and can't be a member. So Jennifer, if you'd like to.
Yep, I presented this at our last meeting, of what the old and what the new is. Essentially, the wording of the ex officios, officers, members would be removed, and the one sentence that states preference will be given to residents, former residents, and employees.
Motion to approve the...
Centennial.
The centennial committee rewrite the staffing of the committee.
Please, second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also, the only other thing that was supposed to be on there was the banners. If I could have a consensus, I mean, we can't vote because it's not on the, on there, but do you think that we... Do you think that's something that the committee can pursue, that the Selectmen would consider? The banner polls installation, our concern was who's gonna take care of it afterwards? You know, changing, maintaining?
Right.
If that's something that the town would, would be interested in continuing afterwards? So, is there anybody opposed to that endeavor?
The only thing.
And maybe we could put it on the next meeting, just to have an official vote? So that we can, we're starting to get prices and look at things, we just wanna, just want the go-ahead.
And then we have to get permission from National Grid to use the polls, and they always say yes.
Yeah.
And they do adopt towns and actually put them in so they're firing up away from the wire.
Is it you who told me that?
Yeah.
That they'll actually install them for you in lieu of one banner or something?
Yeah.
So, okay.
They have the on-call guys doing it at night, because they're just doing nothing, waiting for something to happen, so they give them a list of little jobs.
Okay. All right, then we'll just pursue that and get all the ducks in a row before we go.
Yeah.
So if we could have that on the next.
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
That was it?
Mm-hmm.
Good. First public forum. Correspondence. It was just a couple of charters raising prices again.
Shock.
It's a shock.
Twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five cents. So, it's for broadcasting fees. So, that's one little thing. It's not too often, we only get raised for something less than a dollar.
I know. It's not a dollar.
And then the Bay State Trail Riders Association, they, I guess, it seems like they have concerns about the walk path and their trail merging for 3.7 miles, but I don't know if anybody read that.
I did. They seem to have extensive conversation or, you know, presence at meetings.
Yeah.
And then it just seems that they've just done whatever they, you know, not taken their concerns into consideration.
Right.
But there is really no action you can take on any of that.
Yeah, that we can do. So, I would just, I guess, we can.
Acknowledge that it was received.
Yeah. No. It's completely out of our hands.
I think it's tough to go back in the state when their final design and everything's in, I don't know what, Jimmy, what can you do at that point?
Right.
Unfortunately.
Anyway. CMR PC. I don't know if you had any.
Traffic.
I got my, huh?
Yes, the traffic.
The traffic, the traffic.
Yeah. Next month should be a quarterly meeting coming up. See what new stuff we're gonna do for next year. And that was it, really. So next, we have appointments and resignations, the centennial celebration.
So what we'd be looking for is an appointment of Ronald Landry, Chief Ronald Landry, to the Centennial Committee.
So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
You're officially a voting member.
Now, whatever you say can actually count, and we might even listen to you.
Well.
Thank you for the help. Next, we have an appointment for, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, all right, that's... Now, we have Police Department appointment. I respectfully request the Millville Board of Selectmen appoint Scott Gould as a full-time police officer at their December 1st meeting. Scott is a part-time officer with current as well as past experience in Millville. Graduate of the full-time police academy and is an asset to the town. He's been around for a little while with us anyways.
Rather unique, Scott started in Millville a while, almost 25 years ago, spent 23 years in North Springfield, now he's returned back to Millville. He's been chosen as our next full-time police officer, given his education, his background, his experience, he's a logical choice for town. He's gonna serve us well, he's been working with us for two years as a part-time police officer, and he's been doing very well. So he's a logical choice, and I think he's another great asset to complement the people that we do have. So I strongly recommend you do appoint Scott.
Motion, yeah, motion to appoint, second.
And what's the date?
This would be through June 30th, 2015.
Oh, wow, next year.
Yep.
Okay. We're good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. All right, thank you, Scott.
I'd just like to thank the Selectmen for the trust and confidence you placed in me. And on a good note, you don't have to pay any medical insurance for me.
Well, that's a very good point, because as a total of four people, four out of five.
Yeah.
We've never taken look for us. We had it for seven years, it's a lot of money, so that's not the reason why you were chosen, although it helped.
That'll give you the $20 later.
Otherwise, it's very hard.
But I thank you all for the trust you placed in me, and I thank Chief Landry for the opportunity to serve the town another time, 27 years later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Helen, it's all you.
The first thing I wanted to question was, at the Board's first goal-setting meeting, there was some discussion about when the town officials came in for their annual reports and updates. The thought was asking them to bring with them at least one goal they would look towards for the next year. I was just looking for specific language from the Board as to how you wanted me to request that. We're getting ready to start scheduling the 2015 now, and I just wanted to add that information when we started doing the scheduling.
Excuse me, I would, I would think that we should, you know, ask, seeing everybody, most of those people are volunteers as it is. You know, ask if they, if they have any ideas, not make it a mandatory. We might get more cooperation by asking than demanding.
That's a good point.
You know?
We could maybe.
And really, any idea is welcome to.
Or if they ask the Board for suggestions.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, maybe bullet items of things that you may want to include in your report when you come, because I know some are very detailed and some are very short. And it's personality, it's department, I mean, how much can you talk about, you know, gary fee and talk about, you know, dogs, and you know what I'm saying? As opposed to another committee. So I think maybe suggestions of, you know, like accomplishments for the year, goals going forward. I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you know, needs, wants, kind of things.
Otherwise, other departments that actually help that particular department out. You know, how they could help each other, stuff like that.
Collaboration.
Yeah.
Possible collaborations.
When I do quarterly business reviews, one of the things they give you is, if you had a magic wand.
Yeah.
What would you want? It's not a bad thing, just say.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Possible things they might include in their report. Okay. And the other thing, I think I gave you all a copy of this, the advertising costs?
Yes.
Back, I think it was in 2008, I think I have the date on here. I think 2008, the Board of Selectmen at the time voted to go with Milford Daily News for our advertising, because at the time, it was much less expensive than the call. We just recently compared Milford Daily to Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and find that the Worcester Telegram and Gazette is now even less expensive than Milford Daily News. So I'm just bringing this to your attention, it's completely up to you. If you would like to change, I would just wanna give the departments a heads-up and give them, you know, some time to.
Wow.
Do we know what the one socket call rate is?
I didn't get it, but it is higher than Milford.
Well, the Planning Board public hearing stuff, it's almost half.
Yeah.
Then we're looking at a $200 difference, about 40% for the poll hearing. And the help wanted is almost 50%.
My only question would be the circulation of respective publications in Millville. Where's the greatest visibility?
Planning Board public hearings, most of those are, butters are notified via mailing. Certified mail.
Yes.
Certified mail. Poll hearings for us? Certified mail. Certified mail. For butters, yeah. So I think those with the greatest interest are notified. I think, I'm gonna get slapped on the hand for this, but I think print papers are of yesterday.
Yeah.
I'm surprised that the state hasn't changed the way we have to notify.
Yeah.
I know Worcester Telegram, I'm not sure about their public hearing and legal ads, but I know when you view articles, there is a fee online, which I don't particularly like. But I think with all of the other ways we can get information out, I'm okay with going the cheaper route to save the town money. Because I don't think.
I would say most of my street is Worcester Telegram, when we used to get papers.
That's what I'm saying, nobody gets it.
Social media, Facebook, Twitter. Yeah. Website.
You know, there is a public hearing on this here, I think they're getting the information. Cable, we post them on cable.
So basically, all we have to do is satisfy the requirements of posting a meeting.
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely. And no paper.
So, cheap.
Blackstone and Lightyear, do they count?
We can save 40%.
I don't think so.
I mean, we go to Worcester, we save 40%.
Right.
Roughly.
Yep. And all that stuff.
I took a little brainer.
I'm good with it. I'll make the motion to go with Worcester. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my recommendation is for January 1st.
January, yeah, okay.
And that's all I know.
Great. All business. So new business, we have the 2015 licenses for the following, Potbelly Pub, Georgia's Variety, Century Discount Liquors, Mill Tavern Pizza, Millville Motors, and Oxbridge Auto. Motion approved, is that what we're gonna do? Everybody's.
Taking one more.
Oh, we're doing, okay. Yeah.
Yep, my recommendation is to take each establishment individually, and within each establishment, some have more licenses than others, so if you could just go through your cover sheet.
So the Milk, the Milk Tavern Pizza, the Convento license, license number CV2.
So moved.
Second. And they, everything's up to.
Yes, all above the line, all these establishments are completely paid in full, everything's been filled out, everything's been signed by required town officials.
Well, that makes it easier than last year.
Yes.
Awesome, all right, great, okay, so now we know that, all right, so all in favor? Aye. Century Discount Liquors Retail Alcohol License, number 071-800-005.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Georgia's Variety Store Retail Alcohol License, number 071-800-009.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Potbelly Pub, there's five of them, we'll do each one.
You can do them all under one vote, unless somebody has a problem with that.
Okay, if we have a problem with any particular one, just hold that one. On-premises Alcohol License, 071-800-003. The Pool Table License, number PT1. Automatic Amusement Device License, number A1. Entertainment License, number E1. And Convento License, number CV1. Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oxbridge Auto, Class 2 License, number 2.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Millville Motors, Class 2 License, license number 1.
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, we have, at the bottom, and the Polish Club was not approved by the Board of Health due to violations. It is due for reinspection on December 7th, and the Board, I recommend the Board consider the below licenses on December 15th, which would be their on-premises alcohol, pool table, automatic amusement device license, entertainment license, and the Convento license.
Yep, the few violations were very, very minimal, unfortunately, our inspector got out there very late in the game.
Yeah.
If he could've gotten out there sooner, I'm sure they would've been ready by tonight, but he didn't get out there until the last Friday before the deadline.
Okay.
So I don't anticipate there being any issues with this for the 15th.
Okay.
Motion to pull till the 15th pending approval of the Health Inspector.
Good.
Let's second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the electricity agreement with Hampshire Council of Government. We voted on back on November 17th, right after the special town meeting. Legal looked at the language, some of the language, and there was a paragraph that contradicted another paragraph, and they just basically removed the paragraph, and both teams of lawyers agreed, and it's been done, so.
Motion to approve, have the chairman sign the contract. Let's second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it for new business. Next, we have a members' forum, nothing on the agenda, anything anybody'd like to bring up?
I'd just like to mention that Green Energy Committee is going to the State House on Wednesday for the designations of new utilities.
Okay.
Chief Landry, Wong, myself, Trish, and Mr. Davis.
Great.
Have we heard anxiously awaiting the report on this building?
We just got it last Friday. Not the report, but the responses to the pages and pages of questions. So we have a meeting scheduled for the 10th, I believe it is, a week from Wednesday, to review the responses.
Anyone else have something? Okay, final public forum. Brian, you just hanging out tonight?
Sure.
Okay, I didn't wanna skip over you if you had something to.
Thank you.
Mr. Malali has indicated to me that, uh, they're working out a way to calibrate the salt mix, he had a consultant come in or a company come in, uh, and he, he's working on it.
Okay.
Very good, very good step here.
Yeah, okay, great, alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks, Brian. Alright, so no, no public forum, our next regular meeting is Monday, December fifteenth at seven P M. Uh, and next, we're gonna do signatures, and then we will adjourn immediately after, thank you. So how is Tom's turkey covered bacon?
Hey, a lot of grease to come out.
My cousin cooks it that way, like, for a few years now.
I've never seen that, like, I don't know that shit. How do they do it?
You weave your bacon, and then you place it over your turkey.
Oh.
And then you cook your turkey, so bacon drippings and-
He also stuffed it with herbs and, and garlic and lots of butter.
Yeah. Lots of bacon fat, lots of butter. Anything with bacon is awesome. Saint Augustine's is getting another new grease.
Oh, that's neat.
Really? Yeah. Yesterday was his last day, he left today.
So who, who are they having now?
Uh, he told, he said, yesterday at Mass, and I can't remember what his name was, but.
Got a lot of changes.
He has to leave for medical reasons, so. It's kind of unfortunate.
Unfortunate, yeah.
And just for the board's information, Mr. Barber will be filling in for Mr. Emity, uh, this Wednesday night, so things will continue. Uh, Mr. Barber will be coming in to speak with the board, um, at the next meeting on the fifteenth, and in the meantime, we are investigating the options.
Okay. Good. There's a line, that's why.
You can take the binder clip off, Roland, if you want, and just pass it.
Yeah, pass. Passing one set at a time, right there.
This is like passing around a house.
Yeah, it is. I know, huh? This set's done.
Would you be trying for the president?
Essentially.
So that's an ass one, wicked, I mean, thought, but we had enough. Two people cancel out, which came into our favor. I'm gonna be away till Wednesday night, leaving tomorrow morning. I am as well. It's Thursday, I should tag you in. Hopefully, this is the last, gonna be quiet, the last travel for the.
Where are you going?
Twin Mountain, I gotta do some work for U P S. They don't wanna be embarrassed like last year on Christmas Eve, and not make all the deliveries, so, we've been running like crazy since June. Driving a big truck. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.